Executive Order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open town, open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows us encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after their concluding remarks. I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comment, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes of the meeting. Minutes are recorded and for any purpose, please wait until your any response, please wait till you are able to floor to state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a rule call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation.
I'm glad we follow the rules.
I'm glad we just got on tonight. Alrighty, um, well, we have three minutes, so we were supposed to pay any bills. Uh, was there any bills in the mailbox, Jay?
Um, just the one we already paid.
Okay.
The Emily, I think.
Okay.
Uh. For the minutes. Yeah, and for the minutes, we should also say I'll make a motion that we pay a bill for three, um, $3,000 for the Center Village study out of master plan money. I'll make a motion. What's in it? Hey, stoic face, say I second that motion. What's the matter with?
Jay, you're gonna second this?
Me? I've said, oh, alright, yeah, I second that.
The chair, we don't want the chair to have to do it.
Chair can't second it, it shouldn't second it.
No.
You told me that.
Okay, so we have a motion to second to pay a bill of $3,000. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Uh, this is $3,000 to be paid to Central Mass.
CMRPC.
Central Mass from master plan money. Uh, Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
And Tom Sampit, hi. Motion carries unanimous. So do we have, we have that bill you're gonna make out the warrant, Tim?
I did, you signed it the other day.
Okay, that's the one we signed. Alright, good.
Yeah, we signed two, so we, we had voted the other one already, and so I submitted them.
But what is, this is not the one, it's the other one, right?
The other one was the Emily's money, so she can get paid.
Great, so this one is what?
Center Village Study, Center Village Strategic Study. Berlin Center Village Strategic Study, you know, the stuff with Carrie, so.
Okay, got it.
So that was that bill, but we didn't vote on accepting in the minutes of the minutes of the prior meeting.
I'll move the way you accept the minutes from the prior meeting.
Second.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion in the second to accept the minutes as presented to us. Any further discussion? I'll ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sampit, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. And we have one more minute. Is there any other items in the mail that we should be addressing?
There was an email about the earthworks.
Right.
Uh, whether we check the proposals that we get to see whether the earthworks uh, committee needs to approve them or not.
Yeah, that's a good question. We, let's, let's talk about that after Emily, because it's, it's gonna get into some detail.
Okay, so it's now eight o'clock. We can take up Emily if you want, because it's now her time on the agenda.
The other thing in the mail, just by the way, uh, Hudson has updated their definitions related to buildings that are kind of used for package, you know, warehouse, shipping, fulfillment, all that kind of stuff. Sitting around because it's kind of not interesting to us right now, but I have got it stored away in case we ever wanna dig it out, because I think they did a good job.
That's because of their Amazon slash redoing of Intel.
Oh, Intel, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was a lot of, a lot of fervor in that, over that.
Bet there was, yeah, if you guys wanted.
Not in my backyard.
Right. I elevated Eloise because I thought she'd be the only one sitting in the attendee box. Why not bring her up here? She's gonna have some stuff she wants to share anyway, so she's, she's with us as well, but there's no one else.
But, okay, um, so Gary Parker didn't show up?
No, what time was he?
Uh, he was for eight o'clock.
What time's Emily? Eight fifteen?
Eight o'clock. We double booked, but that's okay.
What was he gonna talk about?
He wants the, uh, that West Street slash Colvin Road um, parcel that doesn't have frontage on the abandoned way.
Oh, yeah, and I didn't do any homework enough on that yet, did I?
You were supposed to.
Yeah.
But, yeah, he never sent me an email or anything that he wanted. We just, we said we were gonna bring it back, but we.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll work on it some more.
Alright, there's two items that I can, I, that I looked up that we can chat about too, but we'll, we'll table that until we take, deal with Emily first.
She spent the whole day at home, so she really doesn't.
The whole day prepping for this.
I didn't catch, how much snow did you get?
I, I don't know, I haven't been outside. From my window, it looks like a few inches.
Uh, you need to get out more.
Um. Cool, is it my time to?
It's your time.
Um, so I had sent out an email reminder a few weeks ago, maybe last week, um, looking at a document that has the past housing goals. Do you want me to? I think my plan is just to kind of go through that and then just get your input. Um, and then I have a few other things I bring up. Um, that seems like the easiest way.
Do I need to do something on my end to, or you can just do it? How do you do that?
Sometimes you have to allow someone to share a screen and sometime it's just automatic. I really don't know.
Well, we're rather permissive in Berlin, so. Great, boy, this is getting easier all the time.
So the first few goals here, um, I'm thinking we'll probably keep them pretty much the same. It's kind of an ongoing strategy to continue community outreach and education. Um.
Number two, we've joined the Assabut Regional Housing Collaborative. So, and, and I think we should probably say, you know, join the Assabut Regional Housing Collaborative will continue to work closely with this organization to monitor our subsidized housing inventory. Because that's one of the key things they're gonna do. Um, and also assist with other types of housing programs that the Housing Trust may try to initiate or something like that. And a separate bullet is the, the likely participation with CMRPC and their employment of a housing coordinator. Now, I, I included that a couple places, but when I began to think about it, I thought maybe it belongs. I also, night, I'm number twenty-six, I guess I included a how the housing coordinator and also number thirty-one, so. I mean, it could go here or yeah, twenty-six is yeah, build municipal capacity to administer programs identified, so explore potential of town housing authority or regional housing authority, but so we didn't move in that direction, but we are moving in the direction of participating with Central Mass on the housing coordinator. And um, we've, we've created a housing trust and they appointed two members last night.
Oh, wow. Um, okay, so I'm thinking we could add a strategy that says something about regional collaboration.
Yep.
Yeah, um. I'll think about that, yeah.
But you, I mean, so you know what's going on with CMRPC, so you can, whatever way you want.
Yes, I've been in on those conversations, um. Yeah, because also you can partner, if there's like something project specific, since you have CPA, you can also like partner with other towns um, on some kind of CPA funded project as well, so that could fall under, um, like a regional collaboration.
Yeah, and we're gonna use CPA money to support, um, a good chunk of the membership in the second and third year with CMRPC for the housing coordinator.
Oh, great, okay.
And then we'll use some housing partnership money for some of that expense as well, is that's what we've been talking about, anyone.
And so when we were on before the housing authority, so are we still thinking that's something?
I, I know I've been visioning doing a housing authority at this point, given the other opportunities that we've got. A housing authority, I think, assumes that we'd municipally own a number of units and manage them. Potentially, and I, I think the housing partnership for the time being is gonna be our vehicle to support affordable housing with the CPA money, but I don't see them holding property and managing it.
Okay, so we can probably remove, um, that as a goal.
Yeah, I mean, of course, it says regional housing authority, so, I mean, if
Yeah.
I know Trish has talked about the possibility of there being some thing be, I mean, maybe out of this housing coordinator, there'll be an effort to create an authority that might serve multiple towns. I think there's legislation in the House that is supposed to address the potential of um, municipalities joining together to, to create some sort of joint authority.
So what's the harm of leaving that there?
Yeah, I think it makes sense now, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm thinking under building local capacity, so that's usually, um, like, um, like professional support, but it also can be funding too. So, um, probably a goal in here about explore opportunities for using CPA funds and housing trust funds. Um, and exploring other opportunities that are out there from mass housing partnership and DHCD.
So leverage those monies to, to attract grant money to further the cause, huh? That sort of thing?
Yeah, something like that.
For mass housing partnership and those, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities out there, and with the new administration change, like you don't know, we don't know what they're gonna, um, kind of put towards housing, but I'm assuming it's gonna be a priority.
Now, we reached out to Habitat for Humanity and they're eager to work with us, so where do we include that as? I mean, that's a new objective, a new partner.
That would be more under, I think, housing development, so work with private developers to further smart growth. We could say work with private and nonprofit developers.
Good. Um, because North Central Massachusetts Habitat for Humanities Executive Director came to Kristen and talked, and then I talked to her and she'd be more than willing to, to partner with us.
That would be amazing. And that's something that's under, um, being voted for at town meeting, right? Allocating funds, um, to do like a Habitat for Humanity house?
No, um, what we're talking about right now is we're backing down to the point where the, the most feasible option seems to be to try to pick up a deed rider. Um, Falmouth did that with a unit that they had, so they never acquired it. They just paid the owner for a deed rider to put a sub, you know, a restrictive whatever in, into the, into the deed to keep it as an affordable unit in perpetuity, so they, they bought down the value to get it into the affordable range. Um. And that way, we don't have to own the property ever. And Tommy Dorr came by the other day and talked about, you know, just the types of things that you, you discover, and Jay knows, I mean, you, you buy an old house, you start working on it and you just, you realize that you've got some liability involved with some of the materials that are in it that you have to deal with before it's rentable. Um, so if we can get the cost down with it by buying a deed rider and then using some open space, uh, money out of CPA to buy the open space, it, we might get it so the, the owner gets their full amount, maybe even a little more, who knows, and, and then, uh, they're in a position where they can sell it to a third party who can refurbish it and still walk away with a reasonable profit. Um, and Tom felt that that was a doable option. And then the town never owns it.
Yeah. The idea for the, I was writing in the minutes, the discussion last week was the idea for the open space to keep it open, or was there some thoughts if we rezone to get affordable housing on the remaining, whatever it is, five acres or something?
So it seems like whenever we go to the meetings that we have, that there's more interest in keeping it open. And then when we tried to figure out how to create frontage, so we could create a second buildable lot as opposed to, and we, we end up having to build a road. And it just, it began to get out of hand in terms of the, the inputs that would be necessary to make it function as a, as a buildable parcel.
Yeah, it makes sense.
You've got, I mean, it, it's not the most inviting piece in regard to septic and, and water. I mean, I think people could probably get it to, to work for a unit or two, but when you start talking about multiple units, like we were initially talking about with, I mean, you know, maybe you're talking about eight bedrooms instead of, you know, two houses with two each or something like that, you know, it just so I said, uh, maybe, maybe we should settle for the one unit on this one, and then look seriously at some tax title land that we've got in other parts of town as an opportunity to spend some additional housing money and, and work with Habitat, you know, where we could turn over the lot, give them a small amount of money to initiate the project, and then they could work with the types of folks that usually qualify for their building projects, and then they, they they usually pull in some other funds from other sources and you know, you might get a duplex out of it or something like that.
Right, well, we still might get a public water supply up there, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, we'd want to make sure we included that potential in the, the language that we use when we buy it. What, number six, Emily, is, is amend the inclusionary zone and bylaw, and we haven't done that, um. And I guess that's something that we, we'd probably want to talk about it, it ours is pretty severe compared to what you find with some towns. You know, there's no, there's no buyout, there's no bonus, you know, for, for doing X, Y, or Z. We just say if you're gonna build a project and you're gonna have more than X number of units, you gotta supply affordable units with it. Which is meant that in our subdivisions, people start building subdivisions with less than five or less units, so they don't have to build any affordable ones.
Yeah, it ends up being kind of like the carrot stick and, um.
So if you want to suggest language from some other towns that we could look at, we may say, nah, we'll just leave it the way it is, but there's no harm in us looking.
No, there's definitely like incentives you guys can, can, um, include in the language. Um, like density bonuses or, I don't know, things like that. Um, I'll look into what some other towns have done with this that are a similar size to Berlin. Um, I mean, it's great that you already have this in there, but yeah, then it ends up.
I mean, well, when they built Highland Ridge, they had to build, um, what, fifty, fifteen percent of the units had to be affordable. And they're doing that.
Yeah.
Because they wanted to build the project that badly.
Yeah, it's a smaller developments where we're getting a lot of fives with one on the road, so they got six, but only seems like five, and, and it seems like it's fairly common to have things like swaps, you know, for land not in that particular parcel and buyouts and things like that. I don't know whether they work or not, we should find out whether they actually get used.
I mean, it may be that we want to say something like, you know, if, if you're gonna build three or more units, one lot has to be, um, given to the town, you know, and then give it to Habitat.
And that would go a little bit big.
Yeah.
Good lord. You would have three lot, three lot subdivision.
No, what about the, uh, the, uh, alternate, you know, offsite property?
Mm-hmm.
Swap, so somebody's got some land that the town actually would like, and they trade that for the, you know, putting another couple of units in their little development.
Or they, um, you know, it's, some towns take payment in lieu of and put that into their housing trust and then.
If you did, if you did something with, played on, on the density though, if you had like a five watt um, subdivision, six lot subdivision, and you gave them a bonus lot, so in other words, we made it work so that you had reduced lot sizes, and you want them getting another one.
Then we could steal that one.
Mm-hmm.
So by right, they have five, we allow them six. And we get that lot. They have to give it to us and we give it to Habitat or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they, if they're not getting, if they're barely breaking even on number six, they're not gonna want to do that.
Right.
You plus, you're gonna get the, the hardest one to develop too.
Right. Anyway, we're open to discussion.
Talk about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely, and this is probably something like if you pursue the regional housing coordinator, this is something that person could focus on as well, like really digging into this and finding something that would work.
Yeah.
Um, any movement on an OSRD bylaw?
No.
No. Still interest?
Yeah.
If you read them, that's a very old.
The town of Berlin has brought this before the town three different times.
Right.
Every single time, it's gone down in flames.
Worse each time, so.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Um, yeah.
Well. So maybe that town needs something a little different than an OSRD bylaw. I mean, me and Tim were talking about maybe looking into some cottage housing bylaws, something like that, which would have a, a similar effect of OSRD. Um, that's also another question I wanted to bring up tonight was, um, if the town's interested in participating in a DLTA project with CMRPC and, and says yes. And like partnering with some, some other towns that are also interested in passing a, a bylaw or looking into it, holding some regional dialogues and I haven't scoped it out quite yet, but.
When you did your, when we had our, um, um, open house slash, um, cottage housing wasn't up near the top of the list, was it?
When we did the survey, it wasn't as high on the list as you would have thought.
Yeah.
I don't think people fully understand what it means.
Hmm, maybe, maybe we have to, um, promote it a little bit better, put our salesman hats on.
Yeah, it's funny, because.
Oh, that's not bad, forty-two.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess, I was thinking of something else.
What was the high, the, the?
Maybe it was the tiny homes that were.
Oh, the tiny homes, yeah, only fifteen percent really liked the idea of those.
So forty-two percent, what was the highest?
Um, small single family homes geared towards first time home buyers.
And that was sixty?
Yeah.
Isn't that so, so, uh, cottage housing actually did very, very well. That wasn't my recollection, that's good. Emily, if, if we want to do a DLTA project, the application has to be in by, um, the second.
The ninth, because the meeting's on the sixteenth, I think.
The ninth is the deadline?
I think so.
Not the second.
Yeah, I believe that PDev is on the sixteenth.
We're meeting on the sixteenth, but
So it's usually a week before.
Yeah, I, I don't know why the second is stuck in my mind, maybe that's from the la, maybe the the last round was the second of the month.
Oh, maybe, yeah. Okay, well, I'll pull up more on that, because.
We, we're interested. I, I'm, I'm interested, I think everybody else is. If the DLTA is district local technical assistance, the, the commission gets about two hundred and sixty-five thousand a year to distribute. We've, we usually manage somewhere between fifteen and twenty projects. We've already funded in the first round. Um, you know, close to two hundred thousand, but there's still another sixty in the second round, and I'm the chair of the committee. So I, I, I would, um, unscrupulously um, push for it if we were to apply, which probably isn't fair, but nonetheless, the hell with it.
Exactly.
So if you guys thought it was something that you wanted to have some discussion regionally about, and maybe because we were talking about, you know, you might pull in some of these contractors, like you know, you were pulling up that article about the Greenborough or whatever his name is, doing that other stuff, you know, I mean, we could pull in some of these, have a nice forum somewhere where the other towns can come and participate and brainstorm about, well, how was zoning bylaw overlay would look and all that sort of stuff, so.
I think if you have multiple towns that are inviting these guys to come to a forum, they, they, they will respond because they've got multiple, and it's not like us going out and saying, you know, why don't you come and talk to us? Because we don't, you don't have enough weight behind that, you know, you need the group behind it to, then there's some interest there.
Yeah, so far, I talked to Princeton this morning and they're, they're interested. They just finished their housing production plan. Um, and then Sutton also is interested. Their, um, town planner has already drafted a zoning bylaw, but hasn't really like done anything with implementation. Um, so I might reach out to a few other towns too and.
Great.
Keep the interest.
Good.
Awesome, okay, that's very exciting.
I like that.
Um, okay, so moving forward with this. Oh, so the OSRD.
Pitch the, pitch the overlay district for cottage housing in there instead.
Yeah, that's what I'm leaning towards.
Because ever, I mean, even when Ron was chair, years, I mean, we've been talking about this for years now.
Yeah, at least eight years.
And we like it, and the, the town seems to like it too, given the surveys. And we like it. And the the town seems to like it too, given the surveys, so. Nice.
The other thing that got a lot of points and has become a central part of the California solution to housing shortage is ADUs.
Right.
And in the past, when ADU related, I'm trying to think what that somehow at town meeting, we were voting on something related to that. Remember Peter Hoffman put it up when he first came to town? Do you remember what that was?
It was attached accessory apartments and we had, we had voted years ago to allow accessory structures to be converted to accessory dwelling units. If they were in existence prior to nineteen ninety. And his unit was younger than that and wasn't eligible. And he wanted to have that modified to allow younger units. But it didn't pass, right? Or?
It didn't pass.
But it's a complicated issue, because I think one of the things that happened. Wasn't there something also involved in that which uh, made it more had enforcement for the requirement of disclosing those. So I remember at the time, half the people in town had ADUs and weren't saying anything about it. And I think Peter's proposal would have disrupted that. So the fact that people voted against it did not mean that they were opposed to ADUs. It meant that they didn't wanna you know.
Well, I mean, if you start counting those bedrooms, then your septics might not qualify any. I mean, there's all sorts of hiccups, so. But in this case, we're really talking about new units that would be allowed in addition to the existing unit. If the lot met the border health requirements per se and that sort of stuff. So and I thought, like you said, that article in the Times was interesting because it there's a lot of emphasis being put into getting these things constructed, so you can just drop them on a lot in no time, right? Well, I mean, we we could certainly say we're interested in in reviewing it. That's small, is that small scale infill? Is, does that suggest it's on vac, that infill is on vacant lots? Or are we talking about? We don't have many vacant lots in in some of these villages. What we've got is existing lots and a lot of times the lots are substandard, so trying to squeeze an extra unit in is gonna be difficult. Plus, the septic systems probably wouldn't support the extra bedrooms, but.
Uh, we could add a separate strategy just focused on ADUs, say like investigate ways to make the ADU bylaw more flexible. If people are finding it's hard to develop one with the zoning and that's what I've suggested to towns in the past. I I don't know exactly like if there's like a a maximum size or maximum number of bedrooms, or you need a certain number of parking spots for it. Sometimes there's certain things that can make it really hard. Develop ADUs. You think people have run into that when when applying for like a special permit to get one? You can also say you know, it's allowed by right in certain areas. That would also make it easier.
Well, I think that is another item for further discussion makes sense. I mean, it doesn't mean we've got to do it. It just means we'll explore it.
I think if we're gonna talk about cottage housing, we should talk about ADUs at the same time.
Yeah.
They're kind of similar.
Yeah, something that has kind of been brought up as a as a project recently too is um, short term rentals and people who have existing ADUs, just renting them out on like Airbnb or VRBO. Which can be helpful if you're trying to, you know, boost like local businesses or things like that and like really attract more tourists, but also can kind of take away from your housing supply if you need more like smaller units for the senior population. I don't know if that's something that's come up in the town at all, but we've started to look into this. We had a conversation with the town of Dudley and they're looking at making it a little bit, just just having something on the on the books and knowing how to regulate it.
Yeah, because right now it's banned in Berlin, but we have people doing it anyways. So maybe it needs to get another look, because I mean, when was that? When was it banned? It must have been a long time ago.
Well, we've got language that allows a bed and breakfast.
Right. So we tried to, we tried to go beyond that and Lynn Ryan shot it down, town meeting.
What did we do? We?
We had, we had a three pronged approach and the I I I think it was bed and breakfast was one of them and then it was more.
Well, for Jay's house.
Yes, exactly.
Barry wanted to have an a larger bed and breakfast than what we would have. And and so we've got language in there that allows that too.
Correct. So, yeah, so what happened was is they wanted to bring in trainers from Europe. For like six months stints.
So he that was.
Oh, six?
Yeah, yeah, maybe. I mean, the first one was for units with less than X number of inhabitants and then the other was for above that and and both those things passed.
Right. And the third one didn't. And that was the one I distinctly remember, because it was the three of them that was I was asked to introduce them. And we had buy in from everybody. We talked to everybody prior to the town meeting and I got sandbagged at town meeting from Lynn. And she didn't like the last one.
Wow.
And I got caught.
But that was, that was quite a while ago. That was before Airbnb, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause, because right now, you know, it's not allowed, Airbnb is not allowed, and I think people may be doing it anyways and might be worth seeing how people feel about it.
Definitely.
There's a tax on it too, so it can also bring, um, this is something that we're also, sorry, my internet's unstable. We're also doing a DLTA project for this as well. So if the town is interested in exploring this more, you can also hop onto that project. I'm working with a class at Clark University and they're doing some research on it, kind of looking into what other towns and cities have done and some best practices and so this is something CMRPC is really trying to get into and understand, so we know how to just how to work around this, because if Airbnb is something that's not going away and.
It's it's more important for places like down the Cape and what have you, or you know, that have you know, tourist attractions.
Yeah. Who who else is in that one, Emily?
Um, so far, I think just Dudley, but I trying to get Sturbridge in as well. Those are the only ones I know so far.
So if we were to say we were interested, it's not too late and and we've got room. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, how do you, you guys feel comfortable about joining in on that discussion too?
Yeah. Yeah, I think just because there there hasn't been any real discussion about it since
Right.
it's become so popular, we just should be getting up to date.
Yeah.
Awesome. I'll let Trish know and we'll we'll add you in for that one too.
Thanks.
Okay, so the infill housing. Do we wanna keep that in there as a strategy?
Well, yeah, I think you need to have, yeah, because we, one of the things that scored high was starter homes. If you can have starter housing on on some of these smaller scale or infill small houses, then I think that's work workable.
Starter homes around here now seem to be defined as six or seven hundred thousand dollars.
Um, I think the next one's good. Make suitable pro, public property available for affordable housing. That's really digging into the tax title properties.
Right, and and the the tax collector and oh, someone from conservation. There were three or four of us that sat with the tax collector and reviewed properties that had been taken in tax title. And there were some that we agreed should go to conservation because they were not suited for other types of uses and like municipal or open space. Um, and then there were some that the town has held that are that that were mentioned as possible housing options, so it would be, yeah, let's leave that in there, because we're we'll, we did do that. We did review the inventory and and we we just haven't moved forward on it, but with the housing trust in place and Habitat's interest, it seems like that's something that we could target.
Yeah, I think the next few are good, preserve existing subsidized housing units. Again, that's something that the the shared housing coordinator could keep track of.
In the Assavet Regional Housing Consortium, they're managing our SHI, so. And I think our use of the coordinator's time will be less focused on SHI maintenance than some other towns, because the other towns may not have somebody doing that, but we've got that, so I think we'll use the coordinator for some specialized activity rather than routine management.
Um, any thoughts on the next one, obtain funding to correct housing code violations? I think you can use CPA for this as long as it's on affordable housing units.
Yeah, the I was looking at something that Pittsfield is trying to do where they're they have funds, but it wasn't clear that it was CPA money, because like you said, it wasn't targeted specifically at affordable units. But a a town can, you you can, you can assign the figure for affordability different, it doesn't have to be eighty percent. You can say that affordable units in your town that are eligible, there is, maybe Alouise can chime in on this. It seems as though some towns talk about a hundred percent of of mean income or what, so what's it called? The
The area median income.
Area, area median income. Some towns put a, put a higher figure than eighty percent. That doesn't make it affordable in the eyes of the state, but it it almost seems like it makes it open to the possibility of using. I don't know if that means it's, I think it almost means that some CPA money can go toward supporting that unit, even though it won't bring it on to the SHI, but it does mean that you can offer support. And in some cases, that might mean that, you know, like aging in place and stuff like that, you might be able to help, I I'm talking through the top of my hat here, but that's where the housing coordinator could help us.
Yeah, that's an interesting point.
I know towns are qualifying units as small A affordable. Not to put them on the SHI, but to maybe funnel some of the CPA money into I'll have to look at that, but that's what the housing coordinator could help us with that, yeah. Yeah.
So those were the goals that were in the previous housing production plan, and these are the ones that are in the master plan.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, so the first goal is balance housing types with projected needs. Um, under that, we have support the development of multifamily housing in River Bridge and like projects.
You know, what what is the commission done that would help us understand projected needs?
Um, well, we'll have housing or population projections pretty soon as part of the imagine twenty fifty regional, regional plan.
Right.
Those aren't ready quite yet. I think they're kind of waiting, it probably in the fall, they'll be ready. Um, so then you'll get a better sense of, so it'll break it down by age group as well, so you get a better sense of who's projected to live in the town through, I think it's like twenty fifty, I wanna say.
So traditionally, we've been older than almost any town in the region. In Central Masses region. Westbrookfield had a higher mean age than we did, but everybody else was younger. But I wonder if the apartments are gonna change that. Although, on the other hand, river, you know, Highland Ridge should balance it up, you know, up up the scale. And the addition of the units at Northbrook two balance it up the scale.
There's sixty six at Highland Ridge and there's two hundred and four at River Bridge.
Yeah, and there's what forty at Northbrook two? So there's, we got a hundred between those two projects. And 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 they're, they're beyond, I mean, if the mean age is forty something and the and the groups that are living in those other two projects, those hundred units are well above that age and the groups that came into River Bridge are equal to it. It, it may mean that we're not gonna drop much in terms of mean age. Be interesting. But so I just wondered, project, how do you project the the housing types in and does it mean balance housing types with projected needs? The, what we're gonna try to do is identify the the populations, the type of population groups that live here, and then as a result, try to identify the type of housing that's missing. Is that the notion?
Yeah, that seems right to me. Like if you have an aging population, maybe you need more like single level homes and accessible homes. Um, maybe more condominiums if people don't wanna go out and shovel, or people who are thirty and don't wanna go out and shovel like me.
Did you guys see the ad that's running lately? Did you guys see the ad that's running lately that has two kids, probably ten years old, in a park? And a woman with a dog. And they say, is that Mrs. Such and Such, and, and they say it in the way that you'd think it's probably their teacher. And, oh, and is that puddles, because she's got a dog? And, and then she waves and they say it is. You know, so they're all excited that they've seen their teacher in their neighborhood, and then she goes and, and is unlocking the door of a not a row house, but a, I mean, it's obviously, it's a, it's a unit that's in an affordable, one of the affordable units in a complex, and it says it must be some bank or something like that, that, yeah, it's a bank that's trying to um support affordable housing within their region or something like that. So it's top of mind for a lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, it, that's like the workforce, you know, making sure housing is provided for people who are, you know, firefighters, teachers, work at the bank, work at the post office, like.
So we finally hit the zenith of the rental market, I was reading yesterday that there's a glut of rental units that have been produced and there's a lot more coming, and the rents are finally starting to drop. I mean, nationwide, and I think it's very different regionally.
Well, we know that there's big projects in Lancaster and Stowe and Bolton and Devons and Littleton. Of the towns that are in the consortium with us, that Assabit consortium. All four of those e- easily have pro- they all have projects with, with, you know, two, three, four hundred unit.
These ones that are completed or ones that?
Coming on, you know, be- being proposed to be built.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like you've been saying, why, you know, if, if there's going to be a overstock, why are these guys jumping in?
Yeah, they're worried about forty B's.
But that, that's what they're trying, but boy, it's gonna, gonna be tough.
Well, and interestingly, there was a, a he froze.
He froze. You froze, Jay. Did I lose him? No, he's still.
Yeah.
Monkey internet.
He's still a, a participant.
Well, let's move on without him.
Yep. Sorry, Jay. Eloise can fill in if he doesn't want to.
Well, as long as we don't have to take a vote.
Oh, he jumped off, I'll wait for him to jump back on.
Yeah, so for this goal, I think we can essentially keep it the same, um, I don't want to, I don't know if we want to mention River Bridge in it. Is River Bridge built out?
Done, that part, that part is done, yeah.
Oh, this next one here also looks at accessory apartments. Study accessory apartment issue.
The nice thing about this list is it's going to be a perfect menu for the housing trust and the housing coordinator, isn't it?
Yeah, um because as part of this, I want to have like kind of a document that assigns responsibility of, of certain strategies um and kind of has like a rough timeline. Um, so who do you think will be kind of in charge of implementing this document, is it the housing partnership? Or would you want to?
Yeah, let's have them.
Sounds good.
We can't make a motion and vote it, because there's only two of us, but when Jay gets back.
Yeah, because now that you have a, a housing trust and are setting up a board of trustees, they also could be, um, but not necessarily, it depends town to town. But the housing partnership's in place, so that sounds like a good body to be in charge of it.
No, I'm, I, I'm sorry, I meant the housing trust.
Oh, the housing trust, okay. Um, so the board of trustees will be.
Unless Eloise objects, but I, that, Eloise, you're there, do you, don't you think the trust ought to be the one that drives this? I, are you muted, Eloise?
I hope not.
Yeah, there you go.
Uh, I'd like to see it a combined planning board, housing trust.
Oh, Jesus Christ. Oh, how do you get back on as a panelist? Maybe because he was before. Eloise, y- you think that we should put both as responsible for moving this item forward? That makes, I mean, it's maybe involves some zoning, so I suppose it makes sense. Good.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, oh, here we go. Um, I like this one, consider allowing conversions of single family homes um into two or three family condos, um. Has any movement been done on this since the master plan?
No, like Jay says, people just do it. I mean, there are a number of if, if you looked at South Berlin and you started counting the number of housing units that are here that have more than one family in them and aren't owner occupied, it's, it's pretty significant. A percentage. And some predate zoning and some have happened since zoning. So like Jay says, it's almost like home-based contractors, you know, we sort of develop some zoning in order to allow people to legally come into the umbrella. Uh, you know, maybe, maybe we should argue that that's what we're trying to do with something here, if we thought it was worthwhile. Because it's happening and people are just doing it, so. Do we want to have some opportunity to make sure that it's done appropriately in regard to border health issues and stuff like that? I mean, is, there's fire code issues, you know, access and egress and I suppose there's a lot of issues that if you could monitor it, it wouldn't mean you'd not allow it, it's just that you'd make sure it was being done safely.
So keep this in there, but maybe rephrase, consider allowing uh into something else. Maybe not.
Yeah, I think it's still consider.
Yeah.
Again, it's the chance for the housing coordinator to look at what other towns are doing and bring us language and examples of somebody else having a success with something that we can then say, oh, okay. Let's think about it tomorrow.
All right, just trying to get through this, um. The next goal is ensure that affordable housing units produced as part of new development are kept affordable in perpetuity.
So Assabit is helping us with that. And this one would be the trust in the, in Assabit.
Yeah, I think those look good to me.
Yeah.
Right. Um, goal three, improve standard of affordable housing. I'm not quite sure what that means, actually.
Well, it's like that Pittsfield thing that I was talking about, where they came in and said that they would offer um, I think it was small loans in that case, they had a fund. So it wasn't necessarily directed at affordable housing, it was directed at ways in which to keep people in their homes with slight modifications, you know, widening doorways and ramps and you know, interior and exterior modification, so. That's housing coordinator, housing, you know, the trust, both of those, I mean, it's because you, again, I think the way you define affordable can be in two terms, it can be big A and small A, and then as a result, you uh it gives you form, more latitude.
I think this is something you could also, if the town was interested in creating a program using CPA funds, um, I think they have like homeowner rehabilitation programs you could set up um, with CPA funds and people could apply for grants. Um, so I could put in there like explore the possibility of a homeowner rehab program.
Yep.
Move forward to goal four. Uh, create affordable housing that fits with the character of the community, develop design guidelines for affordable housing. Open inclusive public process. I think design guidelines could be for just multifamily housing in general too, I don't think it necessarily has to be affordable housing.
Well, and the workforce housing too.
Yeah. Yeah, CMRPC I think has some examples of design guidelines and probably some other agencies as well, um, so we could probably include some references to those. Um, and maybe that's something that a housing coordinator could look into as well.
Yeah.
Um, just want to work with CHAPA and Mass Housing Partnership to develop a clear administrative and communication process. Um. Oh, it summarizes the status of affordable housing units and notifies when a status is changed. Have you worked with CHAPA at all on something like this?
Uh, um, I, Eloise, you haven't worked with CHAPA, have you?
Yes.
You have.
Yeah, they, they, I called maybe ten years ago, twelve years ago and asked them to, you know, send us a, an annual, just an annual that we've checked everything and everything's fine and I've never heard from. So maybe I forgot to s- set a starting date.
Um, yeah, they're, they're typically pretty responsive now, I, I don't know about back then, but um, especially Mass Housing Partnership too. Um, so I can give some like names of people you could talk to there.
We applied for a technical assistance um support from Mass Housing a year, two years ago. We, we, we didn't get it, um. It was, they were going to work with the municipality for a year and supporting some endeavor, and we said, well, we're, we're trying to get a, we've I think we had, we had the trust article on the warrant and were confident it would pass, so we said it'd be great if you could help us with the establishment of this trust, but um, they only chose a few towns and they didn't pick us, so.
Oh.
We, we don't like them anymore, and I don't think they do that program, I think they do, I was looking for that this year, because it was in the first part of the year that we applied and, and uh, I didn't see anything, it seemed like they're focusing their attention and their monies in some other direction, so.
Yeah, maybe the section three A multifamily bylaw, it's all going to that.
Yeah, and I, in, in MBTA communities, I suppose they're
Yeah.
playing with that one, yeah, so.
Um. Well, I can have something in here, like a strategy saying, like, um apply for funding for affordable housing or studies, projects, something like that, um, like as they arise. I'll frame it better.
The nice thing is the commission's got this other hundred and seventy-five thousand for grant application support, so, you know, if you had a housing coordinator, you might very well say why don't we look at the opportunity to pick up a, you know, proposal for a grant in this particular area and then use Central Mass to help us coordinate that grant application too, so.
Yeah. Oh, look, we've made it to last one, um, participate in regional collaborative focused on the housing issues of the areas, smaller towns to allow the sharing of ideas, models and experiences. I guess that's Assabit, it kind of.
Well, that's the one we went with, although the idea at that time was to try to get the commission to move forward and in a way, the, the housing coordinator is part of that outcome, I mean, we were talking about yeah, trying to do something similar to what Assabit does for those towns over here, and I think Trish is still talking about that a little bit, isn't she?
I think so, oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I we're happy with Assabit and, and we get the benefit of being able to work with you guys on one side and with the M- Metro West Development Corp or whatever they are at a, you know, that supports Assabit and so it, it may benefit us to stay with them, but keep our eye on what you guys are doing at the same time.
Okay, um. I could like change it to like continue to participate in regional housing collaboratives.
Yep.
Great, so that, we made it through the existing ones, uh, um, or the, the previous goals, um. And we pretty much touched on most of the things I wanted to talk about, um. Yeah, any other kind of goals or strategies that weren't um included as part of this that we should add?
Could I make a suggestion, every place you say housing partnership, and you also add the um the new thing we just voted?
The trust?
Yes. Because I can see the housing partnership maybe going away in three or four years, once the trust is up and running and because right now, we're just like three old ladies and. I don't want to say we're toothless because I don't want to jinx our mouths, but. Um, we're just not in a position to do all the. Supporting paperwork that they expect, that is expected. Which is why I wanted to go with the Asa bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, that seems kind of a natural progression of, of moving away from the housing partnership and towards a housing, um, a board of trustees. Um, that's what's happened in Sturbridge. They also had a housing partnership and then adopted a, a housing trust fund. Now their Board of Trustees is the one who's really responsible for, for housing initiatives. So that makes sense to me. I can do that, Eloise. Okay, um, so this looks good. I think I'm gonna kind of incorporate these changes, come up with kind of a new document and, um. Maybe come back in a few weeks and we can discuss a little bit more. Um, maybe Carolyn has some, um, input as well.
Cool.
Yeah, I think this looks good.
So Jay wants to talk to you about his survey.
Oh.
What is this survey?
The Director of the Berlin Council on Aging.
Victoria Flynn.
And Social Services signed. A cover letter. That came with. For all of us old people, Tom, you didn't get one because you're probably not old enough. It just got mailed to you, right?
Hmm.
We all got, or what did we get? Did we get a postcard? We all got a postcard. Everybody in town got a little postcard saying if. If you're old enough, you're gonna get a paper survey, but you can go online and do it. If you're young like Tom, you can go online and, and do it that way.
For those that don't know how to use computers, you mean, because we're too old.
It's forty-one questions, Emily.
Oh, my God.
Hmm. And it's. One has a lot of response choices.
Yeah, and it's the. Gerontology Institute of, at UMass Boston. Run by Dr. Caitlin Coyle. And I think we'll give you information about it, but when they complete it. We. I don't know how, they want the responses by the tenth of March. So I would think they'd tabulate them by the end of, of the month, wouldn't you?
I guess, is it just for the town or are there other towns participating?
It's to the Town of Berlin Community Survey of Residents.
I believe if other towns might be partaking, but this. This portion specifically addresses Berlin senior needs.
Why does it ask for your date of birth, social security number and the login credentials for your bank account?
That must have been an oversight.
Oh.
You probably get a hundred percent of those mail-ins sent back with anticipation and all that information.
Well, it's going to old people, don't forget.
That's what I'm saying.
And we're the target.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, when, when you get to the point where you have to fill in. The next to the last box on the age list, it begins to get worrisome. How the hell did I get in that group? Because the only group beyond it is over eighty. Ouch, right, Eloise?
Speak for yourself, Tim.
Well, at least there isn't one for dead.
Um, but it's. It's transportation issues, but it has, it's some housing issues, too, you know?
Oh, cool. Yeah, I'd love to take a look at the, the results, um. Yeah, I was gonna, um. Do you know who works at the, the COA?
Yeah, Victoria Flynn.
Victoria Flynn, okay, I wanted to give her a call and just kind of have a conversation with her. Too, about if she gets any input on housing issues.
We'll give you the information so you can go online and, and pull this up.
I think you can see it if you go on the town's website.
Go to Council on Aging?
No, Town of Berlin, and it has a thing of. Things that are coming up or things that are important.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. So we don't have to send you anything, Emily, you can find it yourself.
I guess he is a grumpy old man.
Yes. Yep.
I'm a young lady myself.
Great.
Cool. Yeah, that is all I had tonight. Um, happy to come back at a future meeting this month. Or March.
That would be tomorrow.
See you then.
What do we meet? We meet the, the fourteenth and the. And the twenty-eighth?
Right.
Okay, either is fine for me.
I don't know what.
When are you leaving, Tim?
April.
April.
I'm around, I'm around all month soon.
Okay, I will not be, um, here on the fourteenth.
So should we do it the twenty-eighth then?
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, let's do it then. Carolyn, Carolyn isn't. Carolyn's not back by the fourteenth either, is she?
Not sure. She's gonna miss two meetings, so yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Because CPA's meeting the week after, so. She was gonna be back for that, so yeah.
But we don't have Thomas on the fourteenth, we don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
Suppose we could cancel it. We don't seem to have much on the docs right now.
The other reason I wanted to talk with you is, um. I'm getting ready to issue nomination papers. So if anybody you know wants a nomination paper for any position, they need to write me a letter with their name, address and what position they're. Looking for, just short and sweet, those three lines. Thank you.
Who's up on our, our board?
Tom.
Tom is?
All right, because he's a sub.
Maybe that's why he didn't come tonight.
Well, he only, only agreed to fill out the term.
Oh, is that what he said? Yeah, but we've, he's enamored now, he'll be back.
Well, that's why I'm just saying it in general, so if anybody else is listening in.
What else you got, Eloise? Anything that pays really well?
Not, not for the electants.
It's all psychic rewards, not economic rewards.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that what you call it?
That's what I was told when I, what, was about to buy a horse farm. Words will all be psychic, not economic.
Well, Emily, go shovel your driveway so you can get to work tomorrow.
I live in a condo, that's why I. I don't have to shovel anything.
That's perfect.
You know what's gonna happen to all these rentals? This glut of rentals, because I saw it in the seventies. They're all gonna turn to condos.
A lot of them.
Yep. I don't know what, how that's gonna affect, something has to affect the. Afforded, the affordable housing inventory issue. Because the reason there's so many rentals is to do it, you know, we did get an SHI up, right? So in order for them to convert to condos, there has to be a change in that law, which there may be.
Yeah, I mean, our language is pretty tight on that, so they'd have to, it just seems like they'd have to come back to town meeting. I don't, that'd be a tough one.
There'd be no sympathy.
If something is affordable.
No, if, if they switch to condo.
Or those.
Well, I just wonder since, I doubt that this outcome is what was expected when the. State decided to allow, you know, the rentals to count so heavily towards the SHI, right? So wouldn't you think that at some point they're gonna make a change to that? To try to get what they want, which is inexpensive.
Well, I mean. Yeah, and, but I think like we've. The, the outcry from all the towns east of us would be. And they control the state house, certainly, so it would, it'd be brutal, I would think.
Yeah, what's gonna happen, huh?
Yeah.
If they're in bankruptcy, all bets are off.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yeah, that's, well, we. The three units for Soya Hill.
Because that's, I think that's what was going on in the seventies.
It was a bankruptcy?
There were bankruptcies and they were switching them from rentals to condos. Well, for a while, then there was a glut of condos, which also failed, so.
Yeah, I mean, in the case of Soya Hill, they came to the Select Board and said, release us, and the Select Board agreed.
Because we only had sixty days to get a buyer.
Right, and now you've, now you've.
Banking crisis and.
Now you've got a housing trust. With the capacity to borrow.
Well, be real popular.
Well, I mean, they, they have a lot of autonomy, though.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the, the Ethics Bureau.
Yeah, so. But that does give us options in terms of riding out the storm.
Hmm.
Um, and.
Yes, which we didn't have before.
Keeping those units, I mean, you could. Pick them up, rent them. As affordability. Flip them when the market changed and, and put them into the open market, you know, I mean, to the. Affordable side as a owner occupied unit instead of a rental.
Well, when they left affordable and went market rate, they had to pay the town the price difference.
Right, but, I mean, we don't want to jump into that.
But that's, that's not where we want to be.
No.
Where, what happened in Soya Hill? Was this the co-housing or?
Yeah, they, there were three units that they could not. Move and, and they had them on their books for a long time and their. Um. The banks were just saying. Time's up.
Cut it loose.
It was gonna, it was gonna compromise the. The, I mean, everybody else in the project was gonna be in. In a difficult strait, so they came to the town and said. Can you allow us fourteen instead of seventeen affordable units? And we agreed, um, you know, looking back on it, you'd say, well. Maybe the thing would have been to say, we agree. Um, but when they're sold. We want to have some conversation, you know, if they ever come up for resale.
But that wasn't in the initial agreement that they had with HUD.
Right.
So you can do that for the newer ones, but you can't retroactively go back and do that for pre-existing ones.
Yeah.
I mean, you try to cover all the bases and then it bites you. I got bite marks all over my legs. I guess it's time for me to go to bed. Goodnight, people.
Thanks, Emily.
Goodnight, Eloise.
Goodnight, Eloise.
See you next month.
All right, a hearing date for the warrant? We just have one article. The roads we don't need to have a hearing for. They're not.
That's for the, for all of the arc.
Right, that's the only article we need a, a, a hearing for.
You're gone all of.
April.
April. So we need to do it in March. It shouldn't take that long.
Like, we could try to set up a hearing for the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Let's look at dates here.
Can we make it the two notices?
That's what I'm gonna look at. Oh, I'm looking at the, we've gone too far, so March. Tomorrow is March. If it was in the paper. On Friday, the tenth. And the seventeenth. That would be two consecutive weeks. Fourteen days prior, yep. So if I put a hearing notice into the paper next, send it to them next Monday. Um, to run on the tenth and the seventeenth, we're fine.
Yep.
Okay. I'll do that.
Okay.
I moved that we hold.
Pay attention, what was the date again?
I moved that we hold a public hearing on March twenty-eighth to consider the one warrant article that we've got for the annual town meeting.
Yep. Seconded.
Okay, I got a. Proposal on a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford, hi. Motion carries in. Cool.
You know, the, the last time, the last two times we've done this. Housing production plan, you know, you put all these things into it, but you think, you know, Jesus, you know, when are we ever gonna get? But having a trust and a coordinator. You really look at those and think, huh, you know. They could actually move on some of the stuff and bring us some zoning changes and all, I mean, it, it's. It's nice.
Yeah.
We don't have to do anything. Or not much, anyway.
Are you about done or do you want to talk about anything else or?
I know, there's nothing else going, is there? Oh, we need to talk about the road there.
Yep, so the abandoned way. So I was poking around, there's some language in the state that says that once a way is discontinued at a town meeting, and it has to be at a town meeting. Um, it's no longer considered a public way. And there is no grandfathering provision or protection from this change of status of the discontinuation. Or discontinuance. So if the town voted that that was not gonna be a road anymore, whenever that happened, then. There's nothing there.
Well, I've got. Handwritten. Language that talks about that way. And I'll, I'll find that.
Okay. Because if it was truly a town meeting, then there's nothing there and.
Yeah, it's eighteen eighties or nineties. I'll find it, and if I, I mean, Eloise, Robbie can track it, she tracked it down the first time, I think, or my father did when they, he was town clerk, but, um. Good. And then the other one is Mitchell in the. We've never included any language in our checklist for. Subdivisions. The subdivision control on doesn't speak to the issue of, um. Like-kind soils and all that stuff.
Well, that's, that's not Mitchell, right? That's a different topic.
Well, Mitchell's saying that material was moved in and he's also talking about.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, he, he was concerned about the amount of material that came in and thought. Shouldn't there be some provision? Where the. You trip that earth removal bylaw, so. In the import of soil material. For a road. Triggers that.
Um, I thought a road was excluded from that.
Well, that's what I would.
Bunch of exclusions.
Isn't it assumed that the road is gonna demand that sort of manipulation and?
I sent the bylaw on. I sent the bylaw, I have to go look at it again, but I, I think that was excluded. I think this is all about, uh, bringing soil in to just trying to change the topography of the land.
Right.
And there's, the like-kind soil is a separate thing. The first one, it's 100 yards, I think.
Right, it's a small amount.
Threshold for, um, Earthworks Committee, whatever, review. You know, it seems like we should be looking for that. Or whoever's approving a site plan should be looking for that. Which we've not done, right?
No, so maybe we need to add it as our checklist or to our checklist.
I think so.
And that's gonna have to be a language before the town meeting, right?
If it's subdivision control law, no, we can do that independently.
We can, okay.
We can change the subdivision control law on our own.
We just can't change the zoning, okay.
Right. So if we want to change something in the subdivision control law, you just have to have a public hearing, I think. You know, the, the planning commission with the DLTA money, not this year, but maybe next year, they, they've what did they call it? A zoning uh, they've got someone on their staff who really loves looking at zoning bylaws and seeing where there's internal conflicts. Um, because you know, you do it piecemeal over time and you're in with problems, so they, they sort of help you recalibrate. A zoning diagnostic is, I think, what they called it. And, and, uh, I forget what town did it. But they applied for, for DLTA money to have a zoning diagnostics done for their zoning bylaw, and we granted it. And it was like $10,000 worth of support for that project for that one town. Um, but they're getting good at it, so if it was something that we thought we wanted to do like in 2024, we could put our name in for DLTA funding for that then.
I think it would be worthwhile.
Yeah, I mean, it, it really would, uh, because the last time we redid the zoning was 96, I think. Um, when we got that early mall money and, and Tana was around and we went through the whole bylaw and we redid the zoning map and we redid the, the language in the zoning bylaw. And that sort of caught some of the problems, but so that's something to think about for the future.
Right.
And you know, if you, we, we're still planning to participate with this housing coordinator thing, but, um, if she's serious about doing a, a DLTA-supported project for cottage housing or workforce housing or whatever, and, and we're interested, I'll just say yes, we, we, we'd want to participate if you guys are comfortable. It doesn't cost us anything, we just gotta participate, you know? Money's coming out of DLTA. Perfect, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, no further discussion. All in favor, actually, I can't do that. Tim, uh, when I call your name, please vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.